Yeah. We are now live.
Good evening. We'll call the September 5th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting into session. Could we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Lucetto?
Excused?
Commissioner McGee?
Is excused.
Commissioner Mirondo?
Here.
Commissioner Reeland?
Here.
Commissioner Smith? Chair Clow?
Here.
Give a quorum, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda. Staff, have any changes to the agenda?
No changes, other than to just note that a few items have been amended on the agenda. The findings of fact. And yeah.
We can discuss those when we're looking at approving those. Does, do any of the commissioners have changes to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Roll call?
Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner, oh, excuse me. Commissioner Mirondo?
Staying, I was not present.
Commissioner Reeland? Commissioner Smith? Motion passes.
Okay, next is the approval of the August 1, 2020. I'm sorry. The next one is the approval of the findings of facts and conclusions of law in case number 2023-7079 Bungalows on Surioz Development.
In a board of Madam Chair, I don't think we've approved the minutes.
Okay, now we'll go back to the minutes. Any changes to the August 1, 2020, for staff or from any commissioners?
No changes.
Commissioner Mirondo?
Upstaying.
Commissioner Reeland? Commissioner Smith? Mr. Lawrence? Motion passes.
Okay, and then next we'll move on to the three approvals of findings of facts and conclusions of law. First one is case number 2023-7079 Bungalows on Surioz Development Plan. Staff, I believe that there have been some changes to those minutes. Could you please specify what those were?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Clow. So for each of these, we clarified that there were two hearings of the Planning Commission, one in May and one in July to hear this case. And then there was a minor error with the numbering that we corrected. The amended versions.
That applies to all three of the findings.
That is correct, yeah.
Any changes by commission to those findings? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Reeland?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirondo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next is findings and conclusions on case number 2023-7662 Bungalows on Surioz Variants.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Mirondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeland?
Yes.
Lawrence.
Commissioner Lawrence, my apologies. Motion passes.
Okay, finally, approval of findings of facts and conclusions of law on case number 2023-763 Bungalows on Surioz Variant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeland?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There's no old business. We'll move on to staff communications.
Chair Clow and members of the Commission, we'd like to introduce Eric Ani and Jean Wolfenberger. Eric is with the MPO and used to be part of the planning team. And Jean is our complete streets manager through our Public Works Department. A long time ago, when Eric was part of our team, we were having a conversation about traffic impact studies and how the streets are oftentimes way too wide. We had further conversations with Public Works and determined or found out that state highway access manual standards were being used for streets, even including neighborhood streets. And we don't find that appropriate or needed because wider streets don't make more friendly streets. So we worked with Public Works and initially funded this with part of the general plan funding that we had. But I think Eric also had to fund it additionally through his resources as well. So we're very proud that, you know, of the work that Eric and Public Works has done.
Excuse me, some people are having trouble hearing, so if everyone could please be quiet in the back, that'd be great. Thank you.
So we're very proud of the work that has been done, and I'll let Eric take the mic.
Thank you. For the record, Eric Ani with the Santa Fe MPO, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. First, I'd like just to say thanks to Director Luke and Director Lamboy, Director Wheeler, who have all been supportive of this initiative for the past 18 months longer. It is a wonderful partnership between transportation planners, engineers, that have resulted in a solid work product that we're going to just brief you on. The Transportation Impact Analysis Guidelines, which went into effect on August 29th, 2024, determines traffic impacts, development, and recommends improvements. What was the problem? I think Heather eloquently spoke to the problem. That city did not have its own standards. It was defaulting to the state act. And which is designed for highways. Solution: working with a team of consultants, internal staff, to derive what we believe is harmonious in terms of technical criteria with the values of city safety. Safety first, and then the context of community, context of the streets, and how developers ought to consider those contexts beyond this traffic. People. Where people walk, where people take their bicycles, and then where people are taking these transit. Little history, TISs, as they are called, or TIAs are tools, again, within planning. They took a big turn towards the technical side in the early century when the country was seeing unprecedented growth in automobile ownership. Fast forward to the 20s and 30s, and then in 1975, you have more of the standardization of said. The Transportation Impact Analysis Guideline. Let's fast forward to, hasn't they, our friends at the Institute of Transportation Engineers, had from the early 90s, earlier from the 1970s, really focused on traffic again for vehicles? That shifted. And patient impact, and again, broader elements. Even today, the ITE, looking at both, I know that as a standard for cities and counties and states. With that background, again, pleasure to be here. I'm going to turn it over to Traffic Engineer. Go and do a little more.
As Eric explained, we're trying to design guidelines for the transportation impact study for all users. So focusing not just on vehicles, but on transit and bicycle facilities and pedestrians. And then you could see on the cross section on the side there, the road that accommodates all those users fairly well. We hope to design more of our roads like this to accommodate the facilities. This requires a detailed analysis and recommendations that focus on all the different travel modes. And we'll assess the connectivity size and condition of pedestrian bicycle facilities, which is unique. It is not typically done as part of traffic studies. Across the country, some of this initiative is being, starting to be developed. So as any, any part of a traffic or transportation impact study, we will determine whether or not one is actually needed. First of all, if we have between 50 to 100 projected vehicular trips, it requires a Level 1 traffic impact analysis. Over 100 projected vehicular trips requires a Level 2 traffic impact analysis. There's a distinct difference between the two, or the Level 2 TIA requires levels of service analysis that you're typical used to seeing through any study. Level 1 focuses more on immediate site concerns, media, dog, pet, and bike. Just as within the past, what you have a scoping meeting, meet with city traffic engineering staff, and determine the study limits for all these facilities, based on what the impacts we think will be. And the scoping topics for discussion, as usual, would be the study area limits and intersections, and transportation connectivity for all multimodal facilities. Data collection, this includes data collection, not just for vehicular, but for multimodal volumes as well, particularly for the Level 2 TIA. Trip generation future study horizon years, following the current ITE methods for determining, projecting what the future volumes are so that we can assess what the levels of service are for the intersections and roadways. The analysis time periods, which are typically PM and AM peak, but in certain cases for schools, we'll have to look at school hours as well. And, you know, analyze the specific site use, determine those amounts. We'll address specific agency concerns and priorities. We'll work closely with DOT and the county as needed, and as well as the planning organization. Assess multimodal analysis needs, looking at all the multimodal facilities such as sidewalks, bike trails, bike lanes within the streets. And then, of course, the capacity analysis and traffic signal needs will be closely looked at to determine whether or not we'll need any improvements in order to improve the level of service to acceptable. The Level 1 TIA, as I mentioned, immediately evaluates proposed onsite and offsite access, multimodal transportation connections associated with the development. It'll involve identifying bike, pedestrian transit user routes within the immediate vicinity, within a quarter of a mile of the proposed site. And then assess, for the assessment of these facilities, recommend connectivity to transit stop within a quarter of a mile of the facility so that we can help promote more transit use and also build up the multimodal network. In order to determine this, the master plans from the MPO will be, will be looked at to see where proposed facilities are needed for non-motorized and transit connections. And last but not least, we'll have to also do an ADA compliance review to make sure that that's placed. The Level 2 TIA, which requires over 100 trips, is going to be a much more detailed analysis where we don't just evaluate the levels of service, or acceptable vehicular levels of service. We'll also be looking at the pedestrian and bicycle network. And as part of this, we'll be looking at, you know, connectivity within a quarter of a mile of the site, similar to the Level 1 TIA. We'll also be accessing the comfort levels of the facilities. How far away from there, they are on the road? How wide are they? How acceptable are these facilities? There's specific criteria to evaluate or assess these facilities to determine what improvements may need to be made to provide a safe and comfortable path for all these users. So and of course, we're looking at prioritizing connections to school, transit, and elderly facilities as part of this, while meeting minimum standards for pet and bike. One of the things, as you know, we are moving a lot more toward roundabouts recently with a lot of the developments. So when a traffic signal is, is needed, we also want to look at alternative intersection designs. And roundabouts are something we closely look at because intersections, a standard four-legged intersection, for instance, the signal has 32 points of conflict. Whereas with roundabouts, we can drastically reduce those points of conflicts between vehicles. Also potentially increase capacity as long as a analysis, direct analysis is done. It'll slow traffic down, leading to less severe crash, crashes, the result of that. Carefully consider bicycling, ped facilities as they navigate through there. That's, that can be kind of a challenge, but depending on what the needs are, that will have to be looked at as part of that design. And one of the, one of the other benefits of roundabouts is that they reduce maintenance to traffic operations. Signals will not be maintained. One of the other things that we looked at, you know, something that keeps coming up in, you know, some of the past projects, or the sizing of turn lanes, right turn lanes and left turn lanes. And we wanted to touch on that, design more for urban areas in lieu of highway facilities. So, so that for urban facilities, we don't have as long turn lanes since they aren't necessarily needed. We're not feeling the high speeds. We will be looking at storage and deceleration appropriately for the lower speeds, but high and large, there will, there will be less requirements for lower speeds, such as 25 mile per hour roads or 30 mile per hour roads. Whereas for the higher speed roadways, longer lanes will be required for safety purposes. Then, so that touches on some of the subjects in traffic, the transportation impact analysis. And now we're open, we're open for any questions.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, just when you're talking about scopes 1 and 2 in the TIA, then it's 100 and 200, is that an hour?
Yeah, 100, 100 within the peak hour, in and out, within the peak hour, in and out.
So that's 11 to 2. And for those of us who don't do what you do for a living, could you still add up?
So typically, you'll, you'll identify a two-hour period where you have heavy traffic in the morning. For instance, it would typically be between 7 and 9. You'll identify the peak hour within that time period. And then also, that, that would be, that would be the hour that you would.
And would you do it at noon and at night as well, or just?
Normally, it would just be in the AM and the PM. And then for certain facilities like schools, for instance, that have other peaks, that would be analyzed.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation and this work. I'm glad that you all have been working on this. My question is, I'm wondering if with these changes, there will be any changes in what we see for TIAs that are submitted by applicants and are completed as part of projects? What, what will we see that's different?
So what is remarkably different from the past? I mean, we'll still be trying to provide acceptable vehicle levels of service. So that won't change quite as much, but we'll be providing more pedestrian and bicycle holdings. Because as I explained, we're looking at connectivity, we're looking at mass counts for those multimodal facilities, and assessing the level of comfort based on size of facilities and their separation.
So we'll expect to see still the level of service reports, but also bicycle connections, pedestrian connections, all of those things considered as part of analysis. Great, thank you. I appreciate that. No further questions.
Commissioner Mirondo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So do I understand for bicycles and pedestrians, it's not as if there's monitoring or a service report like you have for vehicles, but essentially a study of connection to planned infrastructure? With recommendation or made, like, an applicant might need to connect the dots, so to speak?
Correct. Connectivity is a big part of it, but we're also looking at levels of assessment based on size of the facilities and their separation from the roadway to determine, you know, what, sort of like providing a level of service for bike and pets, in a way, but it's different. It's not so much based on volume, but just how, how are the connections to the transit facilities and the elderly facilities?
Thank you. And just one more question on the turning lanes or deceler, deceleration line. What would the changes be in terms of in the recommendations?
I think the biggest change will be for the lower speed roads, at 25 miles per hour roads, for instance. You won't be seeing as many of those turn lanes unless things need to be changed. That would probably be the biggest change. The other change is that for 30 and 35 mile per hour roads, we are, we are looking at perhaps using shorter lanes than what had passed with the previous, previous.
Thank you. No further questions.
Commissioner Reeland?
Sure. Oh, to follow up on that question, you said shorten the lanes. Now, within your guys' study, will you examine the areas where there's actually an excess of traffic, or something like that, not shorten those lanes? You have the fact that most of those turn lanes are fully packed with vehicles.
So there, there's a very complex analysis involved. You'll be looking at volumes, each of these areas, the volumes of turning vehicles. And based on the speed, you'll be looking at storage or deceleration or a combination. So the guidelines, the outline, creating a balance between providing enough, you know, acceptable service for vehicles, but also considering that, you know, we want to reduce the widening of the roads in general for comfort levels of pedestrians and bicycles. It's a way to prioritize those.
The reason I bring this up is I live off of Seringo Road in Santa Fe High, Seringo. That left-hand turn towards Santa Fe High will peak times not long enough as it is. A matter of vehicle. That's where my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Chair.
Okay, new business. We'll move on to case 2024-7899 Los Solaris Master Plan Amendment. And case number 2024-7898 Los Solaris Master Plan Track 21, 23, 24, and 26, General Plan Amendment. And case number 2024-7900 Los Solaris Master Plan Track 21, 23, 24, and 26, Resoning. And case number 2024-8852 Los Solaris Master Plan Track 19, General Plan Amendment. Case number 2024-8853 Los Solaris Master Plan Track 19, Resoning. Case number 2024-8854 Los Solaris Master Plan Track 20, General Plan Amendment. And case number 2024-8855 for Master Plan Track 20, Resoning. Mr. Isabel?
Thank you. Give me one second to log in. Can we get the TVs turned on?
Can you please turn screens on for the presenter?
Screens are on. Now detecting the computer. Hey. Since everybody's already read the captions, I'm just going to skip to the next slide. I have some errors that are on pages 5, 8, and 9. On page 5, Figure 1 of the far northeast track identified in yellow and circled on this slide is residential low, not residential medium. And on page 8, in Table 2, Zone acreage change in the fourth column, seventh row, also circled in this slide. The value is 211.1, not 239.47. That also had an effect on Figure 5, which is the bar graph on page 9, which is incorrectly labeled as a line graph versus a bar graph. All these slides have been corrected on this presentation, but just keep in mind for your report, they are error. So the Land Use Department recommends approval of the following cases, subject to the master plan conditions listed in Section 2, Table 1, Master Plan Conditions and Master Plan Technical Corrections listed in the attachment. For case 2024-98, 7899, Los Solares Master Plan Amendment, allowing general plan amendments and rezoning for Los Solares Tracks 21, 23, 24, and 26. Case 2024-7898, Los Solares Tracks 21, 23, 24, and 26, General Plan Amendment. Case 2024-7900, Los Solares Tracks 21, 23, 24, and 26, Rezoning. Case 2024-8852, Track 19, General Plan Amendment. Case 2024-8853, Los Solares Track 19, Rezoning. Case 2024-8854, Los Solares Track 20, General Plan Amendment. And case 2024-8855, Los Solares Track 20, Rezoning. There are seven motions that are going to be required for this, for this project and for these cases. The first is recommend the governing body approve or deny case 2024-7899, Los Solares Master Plan Amendment, allowing general plan amendments and rezoning for Los Solares Tracks 21, 23, 24, and 26. And these have to go in this order. So when motions for or against, they have to go in this order. Number two, recommend the governing body approve or deny case 2024-7898, Los Solares Master Plan Tracks 21, 23, 24, and 26, General Plan Amendment, subject to the master plan conditions listed in Section 2, Table 1, Master Plan Conditions and Master Plan Technical Corrections listed in Exhibit A. Number three, recommend the governing body approve or deny case 2024-7900, Los Solares Master Plan Tracks 21, 23, 24, and 26, Rezoning. Number four, recommend the governing body approve or deny case 2024-8852, Track 19, General Plan Amendment. Number five, recommend the governing body approve or deny case 2024-8853, Los Solares Master Plan Track 19, Rezoning. Case, I mean, number six, recommend the governing body approve or deny case 2024-8854, Los Solares Master Plan Track 20, General Plan Amendment. And finally, recommend the governing body approve or deny case 2024-8855, Los Solares Master Plan Track 20, Rezoning. So the, the site is sandwiched in between Estancia de la Solares, Verdo La Solares Apartments, I-25, and Senior Living tracks. And you can see where it says, it looks like a phone, an upside down phone. The, the two red tracks in between are also part, but won't be included until a development plan comes in. So for right now, the rezoning includes only that, the area that identified in white, labeled as site. And so in 2010, to the left, you're going to see an image that identified what Los Solares came in when it was annexed. There have been six, four, I guess, four amendments that have occurred from the 2010 Master Plan, 2015, 2016, 2018, 2019. There's a fifth Master Plan Amendment that this body approved, but has not been signed and has not been recorded. So I didn't include it in here. Many of the amendments altered the future land use map, as shown in Figure 1, Page 5 of the report. Residential low is extended, expanded and overtaking the transitional mixed use, and the residential high has taken the rest of the transitional mixed use, and the residential low has been changed from residential medium. And the realignment, a rail runner road. These have all occurred from all those master plan amendments. And you can see the differences that have occurred from 2010 to 2024 for the future land use map. As for the zoning, zoning districts changes that resulted from the future land use map include, starting at the top northeast, the R6 was changed to R10. The park identified in green increased in size from plus or minus 21.4 to 31.75 with Phases 1 and 2 complete and Phase 3 under construction. R6 has increased in size, overtaking a portion of the MU District and R12 District. And the R21 changed and absorbed the balance of the mixed use district, as you can see in this area. For a future land use map, the applicant is going to amend. The residential low has expanded and overtaken the transitional mixed use, and the residential high has taken the rest of the transitional mixed use, and the residential low has been changed to residential medium. Actually, that's, that's incorrect. No. All of, all of these areas, the C1, the office, the industrial business park, the transitional mixed use, those are all going to community commercial. So let's. So we're looking at all this area here that is overtaking the commercial office, the transitional mixed use, and what is known as industrial business park. So all of that is being proposed for the current master plan amendment. For the rezoning, the proposed changes to, to the rezoning include C1, MU, and VIP to C2. The changes eliminates mixed use and the business industrial park from the master plan entirely. And that would be this area here. Those are going away. This portion of the C1 is going away, and all of this is going to be C2 or community commercial. On this, you have a table that sort of out, well, it outlines the changes that have occurred over the years with the proposed changes. And as you can see in red, as I've corrected, the commercial is going up to 211. If you look at the bar graph just to the right of it, you can see the differences as outlined in that graph from the table to the left, which we discussed graphically in the previous pages. And finally, there is a proposed change, the, a reduction in the La Rambla Trail. It's currently mapped at 90 feet in width, and they are going to bring it down to 45 feet in width, which would be consistent with the changes that occurred on the north portion of Beckner Road that connects to the park. They also are gonna, they want some flexibility in the plaza area. So as they come in with the development plan, they're able to move that up and down to accommodate a better design for their development plan to, to utilize that, that park area. The applicant has complied with all application process requirements. For the City Code 1987, Chapter 14, as follows, the applicant complied with the following steps required by the City Code 1 pursuant to 1431E, pre-application, the applicant conducted a pre-application meeting on March 9, 2023. 2 pursuant to 1431F, early neighborhood notifications, E&amp;N, the applicant conducted 1 E&amp;N on November 14, 2023. 3, the applicant has addressed the master plan approval criteria per Section 1439D1, necessary findings. 4, the applicant has addressed the general plan amendment approval criteria per Section 1439E1, criteria for all amendments to the general plan. 5, the applicant has addressed the rezoning approval criteria per Section 1435C, approval criteria. The land use together, the Land Use Department, together with the department, where the development review team have analyzed the project. The applicant has addressed all necessary criteria to submit it for an amendment for review to the Los Solares Master Plan amendment to the general plan, future land use map, and rezoning for the Los Solares Tracks 19, 21, 23, 24, and 26. The Land Use Department recommends approval of the project, subject to the master plan conditions listed in Section 2, Table 1, Master Plan Conditions and Master Plan Technical Corrections listed in the attached, Attachment A. And the example motions are on page 3 of your report, so you can reference those when making a motion for or against. And I believe that concludes the presentation, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Escobalt, you know, we just had a presentation about TIA's, and so I wanted to confirm that this sort of zoning change, would it have any impacts on Beckner Road or the other roads in the area that would be expected from the zone change alone?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Commissioner Lawrence. When they come in currently for a rezoning, the, the change from where it is to where it's going to be, our current infrastructure is going to be able to handle those changes. And that's outlined in the DRT comments and conditions that are in your report. When they come in for a development plan, there will be traffic analysis that have to be, that will be submitted by the applicant for the DRT for their specific application. But I think we have discussed, and I think the applicant can go into it in more detail, since he hasn't submitted an application. There is a requirement of the master plan that will move the Beckner Road from where it is to a four lane road. And they are already under construction for a bridge. They had already anticipated the, the need for that bridge, and that, that's already being planned and well underway. So I hope that answers your question.
Does. Thank you, Mr. Escobalt.
Any other questions? If not, we'll hear from the applicant. Commissioner Whelan.
So for clarification, by switching this to a C2 zoning, what would that allow the developer to put in place instead of the mall commercial?
Well, ironically enough, we had this conversation internally. And if you look at the useless table within Chapter 14, 6, 1-1, the uses for a C2 are pretty much the same in a business industrial district, with the exception of a marijuana, marijuana industrial plant that is not allowed in a C2 district. As far as the MU districts, there's a, there's a limited amount of residential in a mixed use district because it's defined by its height. So for specific heights of buildings, you're going to either get a specific zoning density as opposed to a C2 district, which is pretty much unlimited with, with the exception of the infrastructure that supports that particular development. So those would be the differences in the loss in terms of residential for a mixed use commercial. You're going to get a lot more commercial availability in a C2 district because an MU district is going to be a lighter version of that. Mixed use will get into some of the lighter end industrial uses, which can cover some of the VIP uses that they would be losing if they chose to, to bring them into that, that area.
So with that knowledge, then there's very good likelihood, obviously with approval from the city and permitting and so forth, you could see apartment complexes go up in that area.
It's a possibility. Multi, multi, multifamily is allowed in a C2 district. Most of the projects that come in here typically are within a C2 district because they, they don't have that density restriction. That's just performance based.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? If not, the applicant, please.
Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record. You solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, and do this under the penalties of perjury. Mr. Nininger sworn in.
Yeah.
Some help from IT. I'm not sure I'm doing the same thing and having the same result they did. Not quite holding my mouth right. Not quite holding my mouth right.
Okay. Hi. Yeah, I can do it. I can use.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Okay, my name is Brian Denninger. I'm with Orion West, and we represent the applicant. And we appreciate your time in letting us present this presentation, this application to you all. So Dan went over a lot of things, and you've, of course, got your packet, but I'm just going to review a few quick things. So the property isn't with Los Lares. It's part of that development, five hundred thirty-nine acres. And the existing zoning for the parcels that are in our fifty-seven point six three acres, there's two C two parcels, which we're not really asking you to do anything different with. But what we want to rezone are the four C ones, the MU and the VIP. One of the things you probably noticed when Dan was talking about how things have changed over the years is that that transitional mixed use, which is the MU parcel, has really just all but disappeared except for this one fragment. I'm going to talk a little bit about that one, too, in conjunction to our Loop Road that has also been modified based on these amendments. So we need to clean a few things up. And one is that when this was devised in two thousand nine, again, as Dana showed, a lot of things have changed. And the parcels and lots that made sense then don't necessarily make sense now. Part of that's the realignment of the Loop Road. And then also, we would like to, that little ramble of that little park space, and I'll show you why we want to do this. We want some flexibility to move that back and forth. To have maybe get the opportunity to make it have more context in what we're doing. Sorry, went the wrong direction. Let's try again. So as we look at what this application is, trying to break this down into three things, we've got a general plan amendment, which is required to do the rezon. So the rezon and the general plan amendment sort of go together. And as we look at the three groups of parcels that we want to reclassify in the general plan world, we've got the transitional mixed use to community commercial. There we go. And then we have parcel twenty BIP, I'm sorry, parcel twenty Business Park and twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Office all going to community commercial. And then in the rezoning world, those three would be all going to C two. One thing I might mention, thinking ahead a little bit about some of the questions is there's been a lot of residential development in this area more than anticipated, as you saw, with especially with the mixed use going away. And there's been a lot of homes. It's successful. There's a lot of people out there. And in turn, now they need services. One of the things that C two does offer, that C one does not, is you can have a full service FMV operation, which means alcohol sales. Maybe to some, you know, that's not great, but to many others, to have a grocery store, sometimes grocery stores or co-ops won't even come into a space unless they can also sell alcohol. So just just a note. Okay, so the the purpose here of these applications to get are to clean a few things up, but also to lay the groundwork for a more effective development. And part of the issue when you have fifty-seven acres with four different zoning districts, with lot lines that no longer make sense for what happened in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, you can't adjust those lot lines because they're crossing zoning districts. So in order to attract users and to meet the goals of the general plan, some of the goals of this community, you have to have that level of flexibility. Otherwise, the land is just going to sit there. So that's really what we're hoping to do. And then also being able to have greater flexibility in where and how we provide these neighborhood services. So I wanted just a couple of real quick housekeeping points. Dan already addressed item two, which was the math error on how much acreage that we're adding to the C two docket. So it's forty-one point four four. And we also want to say that the one condition that staff has put on on this approval, on their recommendation, we're okay with. So we've, as an aside, have put together some design guidelines for this project already. They'll be part of the commercial association requirements and signage is part of that. So this is the master plan overlay as it exists today. And what you can see, I can use my cursor. Railrunner Road used to die into with a yellow circle. And it's been obviously moved through the series of amendments when the residential was expanded in that Pulte development. And so one of the amendments required that whoever develops this, these parcels will have to realign Railrunner Loop Road to meet the new location. So this is Railrunner Loop Road below, and this is Railrunner above. The other thing that I wanted to highlight is this this little parklet or rambla area. And we would like to just be able to keep that, but move it up and down this rambla trail parcel here. The other thing I have showing down here is the Los Lares Bridge, and I'll talk about the Los Lares Road and Bridge extension here in a moment. So this just shows that we've done a little bit of work, and we've got the road realigned, and this is what it would look like. And then this particular piece shows that rail, the Rambla Trail, and on the Verdoux Development, they've already gotten approval. That was the last amendment. You reduce that to forty-five feet. All we're doing is asking to align up with that. Now, this particular, this is one of our conceptual test fits. And I'll talk a little bit more about this, but this is why we'd like to move that park around because we have this nestled here between some restaurants and some other commercial services. So I want to talk just real quick. I know there's some discussion in the staff report around the bridge. And so I wanted wanted to comment quickly on the master plan as it's written today as three different sets of properties that can trigger this bridge under three different conditions, and we're one of them. And it's all a function of when one of these three properties reached a certain defined develop intensity, then the extension of Los Lares Drive and the bridge will need to go in. I wouldn't say that, although we're not sure we'll be the ones that trigger it first, we are in the design process, working with Public Works to design and get the bridge approved. That's what Dan was commenting on earlier. We haven't started construction, but we have, of course, committed to the design. And so we've got the theme application in, and the city has sponsored that application, and they're in review of the sixty percent design set right now. So our intent is that the bridge will be designed and it'll be shovel ready, and whoever gets there first will be dealing with it. So just real quick, just reviewing, you've seen this slide from Dan. So this is now as things are are laid out, and our fifty-seven acres is circ or outlined in the red. And then the light blue and the purples are what we want to basically try to get rezoned to C two. And if you kind of remember what was going on with the transitional mixed use all up in here, it's kind of now gone to residential with the Verdoux Development, it's it's a multifamily project, but it is still zoned residential in the Pulte expansion. And so if you kind of look at how where that area was based on what we're asking, it's very similar. So we haven't really gotten anything out of kilter with regard to the master plan. So with regard to infrastructure, and I'm going to go through our conceptual test fit here in a moment, try to hopefully answer some of the questions about multifamily and uses that we're contemplating. And in that effort, though, we use that test fit as a C two zone district, the entire fifty-seven acres, to look at what the impact was on the infrastructure. And we determined through our own consultants, and the city has agreed, the DRT group, as you saw in the packet, that the proposed rezoning does not have a negative impact on the water. There's a twelve inch water line running along Beckner or the sanitary sewer infrastructure, and it's more than adequate to handle this. Also, for the TIA, at some point in time, there was a discussion about traffic. Beckner Road between Los Lares Drive, that roundabout, and then the Railrunner Loop and the Railrunner Road roundabout would be expanded to from two to four lanes. And that would come with development plans. So as the development plans are submitted, there'll be a traffic analysis associated with it as well. And at some point, it's going to trigger that improvement. The current traffic demands overall are tracking much lower than were anticipated when the master plan was first adopted in in the two thousand nine timeframe. And I also want to mention, I think everybody knows, which is confirming that all new development to the R fifty-seven acres, we would need to bring and provide water rights, and we would do that with the development plans. So I wanted to just kind of talk talk real quick about the economic benefits, and we we covered this in our application and under Dan's touchdown in the packet. But, you know, these items out of the general plan directly go to, you know, economic development and benefit to the community. And I'm going to talk a little bit about more of these as we go into our our test fit. But these are all positive things that we feel like we're doing with this, what this reason will accommodate or allow. So what's the opportunity as we see it? So when we look at the mixed uses, and we're thinking about the neighborhood and and commercial retail, and I'm going to talk a little bit about a retail core, because for this project to be successful, not only do we need the retail services, but the community at large does as well. And so we're talking about, you know, restaurants, shops, maybe a coffee shop. We're talking about trying to attract a little co-op, maybe like a Connie's or a Monzanato. We're talking about copy printing, maybe dry cleaning in a pharmacy. It could be a possibility as well. These are all things that we included in our test fit. I really have to just do this right. So we're also talking about office, including medical office. I think you all know about the medical office building that's right next to this development. We feel like there's a real opportunity for the extension of more medical office and maybe a small medical campus, if you will. We think there's a medical education opportunity. These are just people that have knocked on our doors. We think there is multifamily residential here. We, I'm going to talk a little bit more about this because if you look at the hospital and if you look at the Nexus Health Center, they need housing for the people that are going to be working there. And they not only need housing, but we need what we're going to call workforce housing, which is somewhere between eighty percent and under twenty percent AMI. And of course, we're looking at affordable. It's a need as well. We're talking to one particular group that once this is successful, if our application is successful and approved, give them a legal out of record, we'll be looking at at a multifamily project that does have both affordable and workforce housing in it. I want to apologize for this. I'm not exactly sure. Okay, so there's also this transit oriented improvement. So this whole idea of the bridge and getting ready for the bridge, at some point, these developers are going to trigger that bridge. We're also looking to extend the trail system as we look at the Rambla, and I talked about moving the parklet. There's a bus stop that will be on the Railrunner Loop Road. And there's there's also a placeholder for a future rail stop. This is the Railrunner. Okay, so if we look at this plan, this is a good look at our conceptual test fit. This is the concept, so we're not making promises as this is exactly what how it ends up. But we had to go with some basis and try to build this out so that we could figure out what the impact was on utilities. We've got some kind of odd cycle going, because it's coming in and out. But if you look to the very left, so this area here in the conceptual test fit, very high upper left. This is really obnoxious. Sorry. I wonder. Not going to touch anything and see what happens. The upper left is a hotel. Right below that is a multifamily. Next to it is this retail core we've been talking about. As you move to the right, that could be a combination of retail or a medical office or other office uses. It could also be more multifamily if that's the way it went. But we kind of planned this out as a way that we thought would show the most intensity on the infrastructure system to make sure we could make this work. This is our little retail core. Yeah, really sorry about this. I'm going to try to rush through this. So this contemplates at the very top a little co-op, like a Monzanato or Connie's. We've got a couple of restaurants and then other retail services. And this would be the dry cleaning and the and the printing and the other items that we talked about earlier. Almost done, so I think we're going to power, try to power through it with that, try to restart if I can. So this is just an artist's view of of what this might look like, what this core could look like. This is another view. This is the roundabout at at Railrunner Loop Road. And so with that, I'm going to stop and be easy on your eyes, and we'll stand for questions.
Any questions? Thank you. At this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Is anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this project? If so, please come forward. It appears that there's no one present that wants to speak on this project. Maggie, do we have anyone on Zoom? Maggie, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, Chair Clow, it looks like we have a hand up, hold on one minute. Okay, Gary and Lori, I'm going to. To mute. Okay, let me just hold on a second.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your name and address for the record and be prepared to be sworn in.
Lori Laswell, I'm at forty seven fifteen Las Plazuelas in the Los Laro subdivision. Um, we received a notice about the zoning changes recently, this is pretty much.
Hold on one minute, hold on one minute, we need to swear you in before the testimony. Okay, just state your name again, uh, clearly for the record and then be sworn in.
You solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do this under the penalties of perjury.
Um, Gary and Lori, we just need an, a yes, if that's the. Do you swear?
Yes.
Okay.
The member of the public has been sworn in.
Go ahead and proceed.
So this is the first time we have been aware of some of the projects going on in this area along Beckner Road. We received a notice in the mail recently. I don't know if these notices go out to our entire subdivision, the entire Los Laras development. It seems like it may just be the areas along Beckner that are getting notices, but I don't know that. But some concerns that I have are that. The zoning is changing from kind of a, an office commercial to a general commercial. And just the concern that this is going to so greatly add to the traffic in and out of the area and along Beckner. That in an area that is really residential. It's kind of daunting to think about having now general commercial where it could just be anything. With the hospital complex that went in across the street, the Nexus Building. You know, you kind of know what's going in there and they have a parking lot and it's not really open on the weekends. And the traffic is kind of minimal or understandable. But now if you're talking hotels and you're talking about more apartment complexes. And you're talking about widening the road, at least up, if I understand it correctly, up to Railrunner. There's just some concern that perhaps the residential community is not being considered entirely. I understand that services would be welcome to some extent, but I think it depends on what services you're talking about. And when you rezone this to general commercial, it seems like just about anything could go in. So I guess that's all I have to say at this point, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
Yes, Chair Clow, one moment, Joan Dickerson is on Zoom. Joan, you can unmute, please state your name and address for the record and be sworn by Xavier.
Joan Dickerson, forty seven twenty one Las Plazuelas.
You solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, and do this under the penalties of perjury.
Ms. Dickerson, did you hear, do you agree? Ms. Dickerson, did we lose you? Okay.
Yep. I had unmuted twice, sorry. My concerns are very similar to Lorraine's in that the rezoning to a general commercial would open this up to.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
I heard her say yes.
Oh, okay, my, my apologies.
Barely heard her.
I'm sorry, uh, my concerns are very much the same as Lorraine's in the opening this up to general commercial. Uh, does, uh, change the complexion of the neighborhood. Uh, we were, um, really expecting more medical offices to be going in. And, uh, now we're talking hotels, we're talking grocery stores, we're talking multifamily. Development. And, uh, my concern is for my community. I serve on the board of the Estancia-Stella-Salaris Community Association. And I just wanted to make my concerns known, uh, to the commission. Uh, we do have a concern about the traffic. Uh, there's, uh. Been quite a bit of delay on getting, uh, the intersection of Beckner and Richards signalized. And I'm afraid that the delays in that are going to cause more traffic consternation along Beckner. Uh, given that this project, uh, may go forward. So I'd like the commission to, uh, consider that and, uh, consider getting the work done at Richards and Beckner before. Uh, allowing even more traffic along Beckner. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another hand raised?
Yes, we do, Chair Clow, Darla. Darla, you may unmute, please state your name and address for the record and be sworn.
I'm Darla Friends and I'm forty six ninety six Ohusfertus in the Los Laro's Estancia subdivision. And I think I, I also echo this.
Oh, hold on, you have to be sworn in.
Oh, thanks.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do this under the penalties of perjury?
I do.
Darla is sworn in, Madam Chair.
Thanks. I, I echo the concerns of the previous two speakers. And I think part of the concern is this broad idea of anything could go in there. And when the presenter is providing examples, the presenter's examples are, oh, this could be a grocery store. Like, I think he says La Montina, I think he means La Montinita Co-op, uh, and Connie's. Well, those are examples that appeal to a very specific demographic. And, you know, I don't think there, it doesn't sound like there's any vetting process for the types of potential grocery stores that might appeal to particular demographic. It, it, it will be, as the first speaker said, first come, first served. And so there's no difference between that being zoned, a grocery store that can be something like a Connie's. And a grocery store that can be something like a convenience store like an Allsops. And so I, I do agree that this is a quiet residential neighborhood. Um, I think when I purchased the property, the idea that the hospital was here, Presbyterian was building its own building, now the Nexus Building is in. Um, a medical office complex feels like a good neighbor to a residential facility or to a residential neighborhood. But I think the concern then becomes now restaurants, bars, liquor stores. Um, and what, what all kinds of things that brings to the boundaries of our neighborhood when we're already. You know, pretty close to, to some rather unsavory activity that happens along Surios. I think the city doesn't do a very good job of maintaining safety and maintaining traffic. And is not at all interested in reducing things like loud mufflers. And so I think a development like this just brings a dramatic change to a neighborhood that's very quiet, feels very safe and is very residential. I mean, this is a neighborhood where people walk their dogs and kids play. And, um, you know, bringing loud mufflers revving up and down the road because there's a liquor store or a convenience store. I don't think it's what anyone had in mind when they were purchasing property in this area.
Thank you, Darla. Uh, Chair Clow, there are no other requests.
And anyone, um, here, present, um, at this meeting? If not, we'll close, um, the pub, public comment, um, section and I'll open up to, uh, for comments from commissioners. Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would, uh, just like to ask Mr. Nenager if he could to speak a little bit in response to the concerns that were expressed specifically about the traffic. And the concern about the complexion of the neighborhood, if you would be willing to address those please.
Yes, Chair Clow, Commissioner Lawrence, thank you. So, uh, one thing I would say about traffic, I guess I want to go back when this was first. Conceived and then what the master plan was supposed to be, and it was a mixed use community with commercial and residential. It was intended to be, um, have a significant amount of both. So that's been baked into the equation for quite a while. Uh, one of the other things that we do know too is that traffic has actually been much less intense, even with our test fit. And, you know, then was originally conceived at this point in time, this point in the development, and then you add in our test fit, that's also true. The second thing I would say about traffic is that the, when the traffic studies, you know, say it's time to expand to lanes, we will of course be doing those things. So that, that's what I would say about traffic. Now, the, the second thing I would say too, it's going to be several years, uh, before construction, I say several years, a year and a half to two years before construction would start here. Because there's no development plans associated with this, this is just rezoning, the development plans, of course, would have to come later and be approved by this body. And they would be renoticed in the neighborhood as well. So in terms of this construction going before the traffic light at Richards is up, that's not going to happen. So I do want to, want to, want to confirm that. Uh, secondly, the, the, the investors, developers of this property. Do not, you know, they share the same concerns, we don't want to see mufflers and loud cars and security issues going back and forth. Because a few of these folks are also principals in the Nexus Health Center. And so a lot of this is about protecting that investment to make sure this is a quality investment. And that's why we're talking about design standards and design guidelines that we've, we're going to attach to the property. So we'll have similar looking architecture, we'll have trails that are similarly lighted, we'll have a signage plan and package that looks similar. Because our intent is to keep the quality of the neighborhood up, not let it, let it go down. Because that would negatively impact the Nexus Health Center, which is also part of this investment. Our. Oh, you bet, that, thanks, Leroy. So, you know, we see this as an important developer with many different uses. And, you know, I will speak to the hotel and I will speak to the uses that we put in there. A hotel is, can be a fairly intense use. So again, we're trying to figure out what our impact is or could be on the infrastructure. Whether a hotel goes in there or not will have a lot to do with what the market shows and, and what the market will ask for. Um, I can tell you that the market needs retail. You know, we need that little grocery store, that little co-op. Um, I don't, you know, in our current vision, we don't see a large parking lot with, you know, a mass grocery there at this point in time. Much of the buildings that we show to the west are definitely office, designed to be medical office. We've had a lot of people contact us, um, for a lot of different uses. And it's all going to be contingent on the rezone. If we don't rezone, nothing really much is going to happen with this property. So those services that I think are desperately needed wouldn't come along. Same thing is true with some of the medical office that, that we've been talking to and entertaining. So the bottom line is, I don't know exactly where the market will drive this, but we started this medical office campus. Uh, we know there's these retail services needed. We know that there's some affordable housing and I know that may cause some folks to get a little concerned. But we're talking about nurses and police officers and teachers, uh, and people that work at the hospital and work at Nexus Health. So it's important that they can be close, maybe even a walking distance to where they work. Um, so I hope that helps. Again, I, I should reiterate again, one more time, the test fit, the concept, other than the loop road. Is, is just that, a concept for us to get a handle on what the infrastructure requirements could be. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Mr. Pacheco would like to speak.
Yes, I understand that, so go ahead and speak towards on traffic issues.
Um, please raise your right hand, state your name and address for the record.
Here at Pacheco, three one three Lomita.
You solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do this under the penalties of perjury.
I do.
Mr. Pacheco is sworn in, Madam Chair.
Chair Commissioners, I just want to address the questions about traffic specifically. Um, this is for a master plan zoning change. And we don't always require a traffic study for these because we don't know what the developments would be. But in this particular case, we did require. I think a thirty year traffic study, but we had them look at all known approved developments in Los Laro's to date. Project that out, that out, and so a traffic study was done for this zone change. And with respect to Beckner, it currently is four lane from Surios to Least Wellness Way. And the approved master plan foresees this will eventually be four lane facility to Richards. So this zone change traffic study indicated and, and pointed, pointed out that a four, um, two rail runner, four lane would be needed. Um, as this began to be developed, but the existing traffic infrastructure supports the zone change. So that we stated for the record. Signal at Richards and Beckner is, uh, in process, uh, improvements are being done. The good news is the signal poles, which we have been waiting on, we thought they'd be here in June, they arrived early this week. So, um, fingers crossed that, that signal project should be up and working relatively soon. I just thought I, those concerns came up in the.
Thank you, that's helpful. Any other questions? Commissioner Smith.
Madam Chair, for, uh, Mr. Escobal, if I could. Um, just, uh, as a matter of believing in concerns that have been expressed, uh, as this goes forward, there would, am I correct? There would be E and N hearings as the development became more specific and a chance for the neighbors to come and comment at that point.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Smith, that is correct. Uh, the next development plan will trigger another E and N.
Any other questions? Commissioner Wieland.
This is for the applicant. You mentioned in your statements that retail is needed in the area. Uh, it's to my understanding that the Santa Fe Outlet malls that have been there since the early nineties, just recently sold at auction is having trouble actually facilitating the whole facility that's there. Not allowing, not actually having people move into establishment. Hopefully the new owner will change that. Your projections of bringing more retail to the area, it just doesn't make sense right now. Ten years from now, who's to? Be looking at a completely different area. The other thing you brought up was the multifamily. City code allows multifamily for you guys to pay the fee and not offer affordable at that point. Obviously, as a developer, you're open to doing what you like. Uh, but if we give you this approval, we're leaving those options on the table and I just don't see how that greatly. Benefits the people that are already in the area.
Chair Clow and Commissioner Ryland, Commissioners, thank you for the question. So, um, I'm going to kind of take these, try to take these in order. So the, the little area that we called Retail Core, I'm going to try to give that a little more flavor when we talk about services. So we're talking about F and B and we're talking about services that the local community needs. Not really talking about a bunch of dress shops or talking about what you might see at the outlet mall today. So we're more thinking about a little restaurant hub that, you know, you might see up where maybe Rustica and Ranch House are, something of that nature mixed in. And again, these are, these are things that we see and there's some people that we've talked to that we have good reason to believe this could happen. At this point, I, I can't promise it can happen, they're all standing back and saying, until you get this thing rezoned. You know, we don't know if we've got a lot line or a legal lot of record or can even entertain what you're asking. So for us to sort of solidify some of these things, that's going to be important to us. So I, I'd hope that sort of clarifies, I'm not thinking about another mall or another outlet mall. I'm thinking about services that the community needs, the hospital needs, Nexus Health Center needs. And F and B is food and beverage, restaurants are part of that, coffee shops. Things, things that people in the neighborhood could go and access on their bike or just walk. And if you think about what's happened, and we've been studying this a little bit, so the Santa Fe. There's kind of two Santa Fe epicenters, there's sort of the downtown area and you start doing radiuses and figure out. You know, one mile, two mile, three mile, what's going on? If you look at this particular area today, the one mile radius, there's three thousand people. The two mile radius, there's. The two mile radius, there's 12,000. And these are, I should say residences, so how many people in a residence? And then if you go again and go with the three mile radius, six miles across, then you're talking about 24,000 people. And if you look at what's happening with Rancho Viejo and what's going on across I-25, we haven't even gotten started. I'll also say that the pantry dose, it's been a great example of a restaurant that went out in the middle of nowhere, what seemed like nowhere, but people were dying to have a place to go to eat. I mean, the wait there on a Sunday, you know, after services is going to be quite a while, but not just then. It's because we need those services and we see that as being complimentary and important to what we do, those six acres, what we do to the rest of the, what can we do to the rest of facilities. So I don't want to give you the wrong idea of sprawling retail, if that helps answer that question. Now, the second thing about fee in lieu of, it's, it's hard to make a lot of promises at this stage because it's the chicken and the egg. We have users and people that are interested in getting a legal lot that looks different than what's there today. We can't deliver that legal lot unless we have uniform zoning and that's what this is about. But we have one party that's very interested in affordable housing. And it's, we're, we're excited about it, more than a little excited about it because again, the people that work in Nexus and some of the people that will be working at the hospital, they're not all, they're not all able to handle the market rate. And we, we need those folks, we need those providers and we need them close to the hospital, we need them close to Nexus. So this particular group we're talking to, they've done things throughout the Mountain West. It's, they're nice, high-quality apartments and a portion of what they would do would be market rate, but unlike probably any other project, including ones I've brought in, they would be bringing in and meeting the affordable requirement without the fee in lieu of, in addition, and it's not in an ordinance anywhere, but they would be looking at what we call the workforce range, which is that 80% AMI up to 120. So again, it's hard because I can't make promises for deals that aren't done or for contracts that aren't signed. These are the kinds of things we're queuing up, but we have to get the rezoning complete. So again, I want to be careful, don't know what the future holds, these are the kinds of things we're talking about and I hope that helps.
Yes, thank you. I'm glad you mentioned Rancho Viejo because there was actually a grocery store that started out there that failed in the first three years of that year. But yeah, hopefully we see a good future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to recommend the governing body approve case 2024-7899, the Los Solares Master Plan Amendment, allowing general plan amendments and rezoning, retracts 21, 23, 24, and 26.
Second.
Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Mirondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Wieland.
No.
The motion passes, Madam Chair.
I will make a motion to recommend the governing body approve case 2024-7898, Los Solares Master Plan Tracks 21, 23, 24, and 26, General Plan Amendment, subject to the master plan conditions and the master plan technical correction.
Second.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Mirondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Wieland.
No.
Commissioner Smith. The motion passes.
I will make a motion to recommend the governing body approve case 2024-7900, Los Solares Master Plan Tracks 21, 23, 24, and 26 rezoning.
Second. Commissioner Mirondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Wieland.
No.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I will make a motion to recommend the governing body approve case 2024-8852, Track 19, General Plan Amendment.
Second.
Commissioner Wieland.
No.
Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Mirondo.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I will make a motion to recommend the governing body approve case 2024-8853, the Los Solares Master Plan Track 19 rezoning.
Second. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Mirondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Wieland.
No.
Motion passes.
I will make a motion to recommend the governing body approve case 2024-8854, Los Solares Master Plan Track 20, General Plan Amendment.
Second. Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Mirondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Wieland.
No.
Commissioner Smith. The motion passed.
And I will make a motion to recommend the governing body approve case 2024-8855, Los Solares Master Plan Track 20 rezoning.
Second. Commissioner Wieland.
No.
Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Mirondo.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Okay, moving on to case number 2024-8342, 4851, Hart Road Development Plan, and case number 2024-8343, 4851, Hart Road Terrain Management Variance.
Thank you, Members of the Commission, let me get logged in here. It's working, a little lag. Um, no, looks like we lost our form.
I, I was told that you could start the presentation. You would like to begin and the others will be right back.
There it goes. I'm here to present case numbers 2024-8342 and 2024-8343. This is a development plan request and terrain management variance request for 4851 Hart Road. The agents are Inland Solutions and their clients, O D Y dash H F S Partners L L. So the applicant is requesting a development plan approval for a, two warehouses and a terrain management variance to disturb 30% slopes on a parcel approximately 9.76 acres and the buildings would be totaled 63,920 square feet. So these are the, this is the location of the property on Hart Road, adjacent to the airport. As you might imagine, it's zoned I-1 and is part of the Hart Business Park, which was subdivided in 2008 and designed with this kind of development in mind. So this, this development is the, for the kind of culmination of that original subdivision to create these warehouse-type units out near the ware, near the airport as our industrial land in the inner city kind of dwindles and converts to other uses. So as you can see, there is significant amounts of slopes and in Arroyo in this, on this property, which is, are the reason why they're asking for a 30% slope variance, and we'll get to the details on that. This is just the case captions, I think I've already gone over the details and I'll go into more details in the next slides. So our recommendations for these cases are to approve the development plan, however, we are recommending denial of the terrain management variance because they do not meet the variance criteria, approval criteria. And I'll run through those as, as we go. So two motions will be required for this case, approve or deny the development plan and approve or deny the terrain management variance, subject to conditions of approval and technical corrections as recommended in staff report. Just want to specify that if the planning commission moves to approve the development plan but does, moves to deny the variance, we will be directing the applicant to resubmit an amended development plan that does not require the variance. And so if the amended development plan does not include significant changes, just reducing the footprint so that it doesn't disturb those 30% slopes, then we can just approve that administratively as a administrative amendment because they wouldn't be substantially changing the, the use or the, the impact of the development. So just keep that in mind if you are split on the decision. So going to go through the project quickly. So as I mentioned, this is two warehouse buildings, building A is 19,933 square feet. Building B is about twice as big, 42,564 square feet, for a total of 63,920 square feet. It also includes 128 parking spots, which is right on the nose for the parking requirement for this, for this development. It, it is required to get 128 parking spots, it is providing 128 parking spots. It also includes a significant amount of loading docks, so this is clearly meant to be a distribution-type facility, although I'm not sure if they have a specific tenant in mind quite yet. So the variance is to the terrain management section of the code 148-2D2B, to disturb natural slopes 30% greater or greater on areas that are those, on areas other than those, disturb for construction of roads, driveways, or utility placements. So what that means is you are allowed to disturb 30% slopes in, in limited amounts or those types of infrastructure placements. However, you are not allowed to disturb, disturb 30% slopes for any other type of development, including what they're proposing, which is parking lot and building footprint and grading essentially. The purpose of the variance, as far as our analysis, and I'm sure the applicant will go into more detail, is to relocate a regional detention pond that was located on, or adjacent to the property, it's kind of right on the property line actually, that was located during the subdivision process. So that's, this regional detention pond actually serves the entire subdivision. It drains the storm water from Hart Road onto the detention pond, so it's part of the overall drainage engineering of the entire business park. So it needs to remain in place in some capacity and they're proposing to relocate it and in order to relocate it, they have to disturb more slopes. But additionally beyond that, they are also requesting to disturb, actually, let me go a little bit further and since I'm getting into the variance, I'll show you, you can see here on the, the slope map. Additionally, they're asking to disturb several other areas where their building footprint, parking footprint, and grading footprint would, would disturb those locations. Let's see, I have a pen here and do this. So to go over the variance here, this is a man-made slope, this is a, some sort of grading that they did during the subdivision, so that does not count against them. However, here is the detention pond and that is something that they're disturbing. And then any of these dark gray areas are 30% slopes and any of them within this dashed line are the ones that need variance, need a variance. So the, the total amount of disturbance totals up to 2,768 square feet in no less than 12 separate locations across the property. So that's the kind of scope of the variance request. And as I mentioned, staff has recommended denial of the variance because it does not meet the approval criteria. But let me go back and just describe the project a little bit more. As I said, there's, these are the buildings, there has adequate parking, it meets all the development plan approval criteria and all of our standards except for those specified in the conditions of approval. You saw that there was a request for an easement placement for a trail in the, in the, in the, let's go here, back to the picture, here in the Arroyo. That's for the possible location of the Rio Grande Trail in the future, which is a statewide effort. It's not, that, that trail's alignment is not yet set in stone, so NPO requested the easement as basically a precautionary measure in case in the future they do decide to put the alignment down this Arroyo. And I've talked to the applicant, they've said they're okay with that because it's undevelopable anyway. So just wanted to point out a few of those details. Go back. So these are the building elevations. We've found that they did meet the architectural points checklist. It's a pretty typical warehouse-style building with some accent materials and colors throughout that we found that meets our points checklist for an I-2 zoning or I-1 zoning, which is the lowest standard for architectural points checklist. They only have to meet 155 points and they got 165. Building B is about double the, the size, but it's essentially the same template, just kind of doubled. And I'm sure the applicant can go in a little more detail about how they want to program that. I just want to point out, there was somewhere in here, it says there's a metal roof deck. I don't know if you noticed that, that's, that's just, that's just for like utilities as far as I understand, but it's not a functional deck. So there's not like a roof top access for employees or anything like that. Okay, so finally, I just wanted to go through the variance criteria. Just to be clear, we found that they didn't meet any of the variance criteria, but I wanted to just highlight the two top issues in my opinion. And I think you'll recognize some of these positions from other variances that we've talked about here. So criterion two is there are special circumstance that makes it infeasible for reasons other than financial cost to develop the property in compliance with the standards of chapter 14. So, sorry, something in my throat. So we found that there are no sort of special circumstance that make it infeasible other than financial costs to develop the property in compliance. The applicant could simply reduce the building footprint by making the building smaller, they could make use of the 65-foot permitted height. They're only using, I think, about 30 feet of permitted height, so they, they could make up the additional footprint that way. They could apply to reduce the development's parking requirements so that they wouldn't need as much parking and then therefore could shrink their parking footprint. There's other ideas, other options where they could employ integrated stormwater practices to, to better reduce their footprint. So there are several ways that we believe that they could achieve their desired development without this variance and that's, that's why we found that it does not meet criterion two. And then if we move to criterion four, this one has two sub-criterions. So variance is the minimum variance that will make the poss, make possible the reasonable use of land or structure. The following factors shall be considered, A, whether the property has been or could be used without variance for a different category or lesser intensity of use. So for A, we found that no information was provided by the applicant to demonstrate that the proposed site pin and its disturbance of 30% slopes are the median, minimum deviation and that the warehouse could not be built without such a deviation. So we, we kind of need affirmative proof from them, they're saying like, there is no way to build this without the variance and they did not provide that proof to us. Additionally, we found that the property could be used without variance as it was originally subdivided, taking into account the industrial development that's being proposed here. Y2, I-1 provides wide variety of uses that they could choose from that's lesser intensity, which is another thing that's taken into account in this criterion. And then if you go to sub-criteria B, consistency with the purpose or intent of chapter 14 would consistency with the purpose or intent of chapter fourteen with the purpose and intent of the articles and sections from which the variance is granted with the applicable goals and policies of the general plan. So if you go to the um, section terrain management in fourteen eight two. Um, I um, I cut out a few of these uh, purpose and intents, and there's actually quite a few more. But just to give you an idea of what the purpose and intent of this section are include uh, protects life and property from the dangers of flooding and the hazard of improper cuts and fills, minimizing erosion, erosion and sedimentation, minimizing destruction, destruction of natural landscape, protecting the scenic character of Santa Fe from the visual blight of indiscriminate cuts, minimizing erosion and degradation of Arroyo channels and improvements of the condition of channels where possible, respect and maintain and restore natural drainage ways, wetlands, basques, et cetera. Um, so I think it's pretty clear that the, this proposal does not meet those um, intentions. Uh, it, they want to disturb that slope just simply because they want a larger footprint, not because they want to um, achieve the intent of this section in an, in an alternative way. Um, than, than what the code allows. Um, so I think I'll leave there with my uh, presentation and I'll send your questions. Thank you.
Thank you for a very concise, tight presentation. Um, any questions from commissioners? If not, we'll, Commissioner Smith.
And just a little bit more. What caught me as I was reading through this. Is the off-site thirty percent variance. The extent of that, that maybe it will be addressed as we go forward. Normal or somebody else?
Um, Commissioner Smith, members of the uh, Commission, Chair Cloud. Uh, yeah, yes, it, it is allowed as long as they have permission essentially. Um, and they have, um, we, we requested, um, they provided some permission in their initial application. We've requested as a condition of approval, like a formal letter, just to really make sure that they had, you know, everything is fine. Um, I think um, they didn't, weren't able to uh, provide that so that we could submit it as part of the um, record tonight. But I believe they have that um, rec- that letter now and it will be required as a condition of approval. Um, so I think they had previously had um, maybe more informal approval. And now they've gotten formal approval, but maybe the applicant can um, specify. But um, it is, is not super typical, but it's, it's allowed as again, as, as long as it's a um, as a, they have permission. And, and they kind of address the issues of the global impact of their, of their proposal.
Any other questions? Okay, the applicant, please.
Um, please raise your right hand, state your name and address for the record.
Nathan Monzanares.
Oh, please state your address as well.
I'm with New Mexico Land Solutions. We're located at nine one five Mercer Street, Santa Fe, New Mexico.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth? And do this under the penalties of perjury?
I do.
Mr. Monzanares has sworn in, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. Um, I want to first start off by thanking staff. Uh, we've gone back and forth on this a few times and Daniel's always been very responsive and, you know, um, available to answer questions. Um, I do want to ask, uh, if we can hand out some material that was not put on Prime Gov. Uh, we did have some updated responses from July second in regards to some uh, DRT comments that had updated uh, criteria responses. Um, we did request this prior to the meeting, but never were confirmed. Um, is that okay? I do have more than enough for everyone.
Uh, Madam Chair, if, if you think it's appropriate, I think it's fine to pass out paper copies, provided that he has enough for uh, all members of the Commission. Um, and uh, one to, to make sure is um, added to the minutes. I guess that would go to Xavier.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I think staff and everyone will have copies as well. So yeah, thank you. Uh, Daniel did a great job on the presentation. I'm going to keep mine um, brief. But as stated, uh, we're with the Odyssey Group. We're representing them. They're the applicants in this project. And as stated, uh, we are asking for development plan approval as well as a terrain management and stormwater management variance. Uh, Daniel's already gone over this in detail. I'm not going to spend too much more time on this. Uh, I wanted to first thank staff for their thorough review of the development plan. There's some excerpts here from the staff report uh, that state that the development plan does meet the development plan criteria. Um, I want to thank them. I think if the variance is approved, that'll ultimately streamline the process moving forward. So thank you for your thorough review on that, Daniel. As stated, the section that's being requested is terrain and stormwater management. Uh, this is an excerpt from the city code. Just want to keep that in mind. We're also looking to relocate that regional pond that will better serve the Hart Business Park as a whole. And uh, this is um, a little more detail on the question that was asked by Commissioner Smith. Uh, we do have our largest occurrence disturbance here on track six, which is off-site. And that one um, is a one thousand forty-five square feet. And this is a bulk of where the relocation of that pond is going to take place. We do have authorization uh, from lot six and lot nine to uh, do this work um, at our cost as part of our approvals to better serve the park and to ensure a better build out of the park moving forward. Um, the, the site that our subject site, track seven. Uh, we do recognize that there are more than three occurrences of disturbances. But when totaled up, it only equals one thousand one hundred and seventy-six square feet. Um, there's some areas that are counted that are uh, seventeen square feet, five square feet, twenty-nine square feet, thirteen square feet. So uh, the areas are very minimal. And the reason for this is that we wanted to accommodate the ability for proper circulation. We do have loading docks. We're going to have larger vehicles accessing in and out of the site. And as you can see, the site is encumbered by thirty percent slopes on both sides. And that really doesn't allow us a whole lot of buildable area. And as mentioned in the staff report, we're actually meeting both, we're exceeding uh, height. We're basically asking for half of what's allowed out there. This was done due to the proximity to the airport as well as reducing the visual impact of the, of the building. It is kind of perched up on top of a hill, so we don't want it to be any taller than it has to be. Uh, we're dedicating fifty percent of the site to open space. Um, Daniel mentioned that we're going to put that trail easement in that open space location to the south of the site. And we're only uh, having fifteen percent lot coverage when we're allowed sixty. So, you know, it's really not a big footprint in the grand scheme of things. We're also going to be doing some landscaping and restoration efforts for the areas that are disturbed. The, you know, alleviate any unsightly cuts or any uh, signs of those disturbances. So just wanted to outline that. Um, we do have landscaping in the pond as well as along the perimeter of the proposed plan. Daniel already went through this in detail. And, you know, uh, we feel like the criteria was addressed and, and we feel like it was met. But, you know, staff has their opinion. But, you know, one of the criterias is the uniqueness of the site. As mentioned, it is encumbered by those thirty percent slopes on both sides. The regional pond was similar to the prior case. Should have been looked at upon the original approvals, but as the park's starting to now build out. Um, and there are future um, lot owners that are looking to develop in that area as well. This need needs to be addressed. And our client is willing to do the work and, and pay for it for the better good of the park. Um, we also are going to be matching the surrounding industrial uses in both height, design, function. And as mentioned, you know, we are dedicating almost sixty percent of the site to open space. We're not asking for a large development compared to the acreage of the site. And lastly, you know, the occurrences, yes, they are more than three. We acknowledge that, but this same standard is applied to residential, single-family residences. You could have a residence that is actually disturbing more steep slopes than we are. And it can be permitted by the code as long as they're under three occurrences. So our total disturbance is actually very minimal. Um, we did have to account for a number of small areas that increase the overall disturbance areas. But, you know, um, we're hoping that the, this proves that the site was meticulously planned to ensure both uh, visual impact to the area as well as being good stewards to the land. Um, we agree with all of staff's conditions of approval regarding this um, development plan. And uh, we will be willing to um, meet and accept those approval conditions. And uh, just in conclusion, as stated, uh, this is just kind of an overview of what was handed out to you. But we understand staff's position of having to abide by the code and defend the code. But we also think that this was designed in a manner that meets the spirit and intent of the terrain management and stormwater management regulations. Um, we think the, the slope disturbance is minimal. We think the variance is justifiable. And we think this will also provide and um, spur economic development in the area and help the park develop faster, which will in essence provide more job opportunities, more GRT revenue for the city. So there are some economic perks to this. And um, yeah, it's uh, just being a good neighbor to the area and to the, the park itself. And with that, I, I thank you and I stand for any questions.
Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Miranda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just a question for the applicant. And this might, um, after your answer, have staff come. But I just want to make sure I understand the discrepancy in numbers. Because um, my understanding from the staff is a much different square footage than my understanding of this.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Miranda, I, I think the, the description here is that there are some off-site disturbances. And they're labeled here. Track six has two isolated occurrences that total twelve hundred forty-nine square feet. Our subject track, track seven, has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight total disturbance occurrences, which total eleven hundred seventy-six square feet. And then there are two additional uh, off-site disturbances located on tract uh, eight. Actually, tract eight has one, seven has one. But I think that's the, the discrepancy is we're taking all of the disturbances to account because we're the ones doing the work. Um, and it's for our development. Um, even if those were eliminated from the request, we would still be over the three occurrences that are allowed. But it does significantly reduce the amount that's being uh, disturbed if you look just at track seven.
Right, so the discrepancy is what's occurring offsite. Can you speak? What the what's on those properties and what they're zoned?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Miranda, those are um, vacant properties at the moment. And they're also uh, zoned I one and part of the approved Hart uh, Business Park development.
You know of of destruction or modification Arroyo that would be manmade for your proposal?
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Miranda, uh, the uh, manmade slope was created during the original infrastructure uh, installation of um, Hart Road. Um, to date, there's been maybe three to four developments approved in the park. So it's less than maybe a third of the way developed.
The manmade impact is the shaded area uh, planned north that you, you addressed.
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Miranda, that is correct. And that's actually not being counted against us. Um.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Smith?
Yes, per my earlier question, staff member. Whether you have reached an avalanche agreement that will be submitted about the offsite.
Madam Chair, Commissioner uh, Smith, yes. Um, the owners of tract eight and, and tract six and tract eight are actually the same owner. And we do have uh, authorization from them to move forward.
One, one last question. I'm experienced with this, so that, but in striving, you have left a lot of open
Correct.
Somebody might use that open space and scare some of the offsite other than doing
Um, Madam Chair, Commissioner Smith, that would actually probably trigger more uh, disturbance uh, due to the, the shape of the property and the slopes that encumber the property. So n- n- no, um, those contours get a little tighter as you move south. And it actually uh, kind of drops off in that area.
Yes, Mr. Pacheco. He's already sworn in. I think it's okay. Yes.
So I normally don't speak to drainage, but um, for this particular case, Public Works did hire Wilson to do a drainage analysis of this project's proposal. And so I, I'm not sure it made it into the current record. Maggie, did you tell me it didn't? Then we need to talk about it. So let me, um, Wilson and Company Drainage Division did look at drainage for this site and its improvement. This is based on an original drainage master plan that was done when Hart um, Business Development Park was approved years ago. So there, the way the drainage was designed, so your earliest question about moving into the other lots and whatnot. A lot of it, it was part of the original approved design for the development, for the industrial park development. And so I'll just quickly read uh, the drainage engineer's comments. The proposed changes for the development of fifty-two percent of lot number seven will not impact any off-site public infrastructure. And that was Public Works' main question is how is this going to affect the public works uh, infrastructure they maintain out in, either in the road or in the Arroyos and whatnot. So this will not impact any off-site public infrastructure as the proposed lot outflow of seven point two cubic feet per second is less than the allowable discharge of eight point eight cubic feet per second. And the relocated pond seven outflow has decreased the, decreased from nine point oh five cubic feet to five point five cubic feet. Actually, the flow into that pond is half. Changes to the drainage will function fine as the pond inflow pipe is extended. And a new access to the relocated pond is provided. The only recommendation is that when the remainder of lot seven site is developed, attempts to restrict outflow by means of detention is required to stay within the allowable discharge. They're saying, don't, you know, make it worse if this is going to develop anymore. So Zoe Isaacson, who's in Parks and Open Space, asked that this be added as a note to the plan set. And I don't know if you, you've seen this, and I hope you agree to this. I don't know that it's in the public record, so I'm putting it in the public record. She would like you to add a note to the plan set that states that if or when the remainder of lot seven is developed, and I just spoke with you, and you don't think that's ever going to happen, but put it in anyway, that when the drainage calculations must take into consideration all previous phases of lot seven development, so as not to exceed the redevelopment hydrology of the site with the allowable discharge of 8.8 cubic feet per second. So we, you know, Public Works did step back, see all of this, and we wanted to make sure that public infrastructure with respect to these proposals wasn't going to be negatively impacted. And so we can state for the record that that has been studied, and the answer is it will not be negative. So that should help you in your liberation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to state, we we do agree to that condition, and we will place that note on the plaque. Thank you.
Thank you.
Me and Madam Chair and Commissioners, I just wanted to make clarification. The drainage report for lot seven of Hart Business Park is in the appendix of the development plan packet. So I believe that's what you're referring to. Okay. Oh, right. So the review of the report. Okay, I'm sorry, that did not make it in there. But I think there was, yeah, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we'll open the matter up for public hearing. Is anyone here from the public? I don't see anyone, but anyone here from the public that would like to make comments on this project? Anyone on Zoom?
Chair Clow, no one has their hands raised.
So there's no one appearing either in person or on Zoom. We will then close the public comment. And I will open this up for comments by the commission. Any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Won't you ask?
Just asking, are we allowed to have votes?
You can make a motion.
We've got it all in the I'll second.
It's on.
I attempt to make a motion.
Yes, go ahead.
Regarding the development plan, case 2024-8342, I would like to make a motion to approve the development plan subject to the conditions of approval and technical corrections recommended by staff and including the condition presented this evening by Lee Wright Pacheco.
Second. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Miranda?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeland? Motion passes.
Regarding the variance, I would like to make a motion to deny the terrain management variance in case 2024-8343.
Second.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Miranda?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeland? Commissioner Smith? The motion passes.
Thank you. It will move on matters from the commission and also matters from staff. Sure. Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I have two things. One is that I I would just like to make a comment regarding the papers that we received. It was a lot to read. And I maybe have some concerns in the future about having too many things just come to us during the hearing that all we could potentially do is say that we need more time to read it. No staff guarding that. The other thing is that I wanted to specifically ask about, ask staff about the next meeting and what we should expect for the study session. If we will have the code update in advance to review and how that fits into the timing of what the full community review process is for that code update.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Chair Clow and Commissioner Lawrence. So thank you for your comments on the handouts, and I agree with that, and we'll try to make sure things are all incorporated in the right fashion so you can adequately review the record. For the hearing on September 19th, that is supposed to be a work session to review the draft of the code, which is getting released on the 16th, which is Monday. Okay, so this is a public draft release, and then we're we're having a public engagement meeting on Tuesday of that week, on the 17th, and on Wednesday of that week. And then following it up with a presentation to you all as well on Thursday. We will also be scheduling kind of drop-in hours for the public to come the week of the 23rd to meet with staff and discuss any, you know, outstanding issues or questions about the public draft. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And so we also will have, just one more thing, we'll have staff, and we also have Matt Goble from Clarion, who will be down for that week for those presentations as well.
And I won't be in the country, and Commissioner Smith won't be either, but I don't think you need a quorum for this, right? Because there's no action.
Yeah, Chair Clow, that's correct. We we don't need a quorum. It would be great. You know, we'll have it recorded on YouTube. And, you know, we we can continue to meet. I think we could schedule another Planning Commission Policy Subcommittee meeting, you know, as well. And then, you know, following the work study with the Planning Commission, you know, we are going to be going to several of the committees of the governing body, you know, for hearings on this as well prior to adoption. And, you know, a recommendation from the Planning Commission likely in October.
Commissioner Smith?
Is it possible?
Ms. Chair Clow and Commissioner Smith, that is, that is definitely the goal of our presentation to you that night and and to the public, you know, during that week, is to, is to highlight those, you know, substantive changes, which are a handful, you know, I guess, that we just want to highlight and make sure that everybody's aware of where those are, and then, you know, also highlight the other changes that we've made to chapter 14. So, thank you.
Maggie, I would just mention the disposition report as well. Okay, members of commission, I just want to mention, there are, in addition to our presentation, there will be a second report called the disposition report that will include a detailed list of all the changes made, both substantive and non-substantive, so you don't have to just dig through and cross-reference yourself.
Anything else? And adjourned.